Good morning, and welcome to the Russell County Commission Meeting for Wednesday, October 22nd, 2025. We're going to call this meeting to order. Start off with an invocation led by Reverend Chris Herbert of Epworth Global Methodist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Ms. Isabella Williams, who is a student at Russell County High School. If you will please rise for the invocation, remain standing for the pledge.
To all of the commissioners, to anyone who's in this room that works for government, I want to say thank you. In the eyes of God, it's a high calling. I know you all take it seriously, and I've been called to wake up this morning and come here to remind you that it is a high calling in the eyes of God. So I've gotten to where I'm reading my Bible more, and I'm reading one Psalm per day. And today, as God would have it, is I'm at the end of Psalm 52 is what I just want to read, and then I'm going to pray. And let me say this: If you want to start reading your Bible more, that's God's calling upon your life, start with the Psalms. The Psalms will save your life. There's nothing in your life that the Psalms won't address. Go one Psalm per day. That's a great way to read. So listen for the Word of the Lord. "I trust in God's unfailing love forever and ever. For what you have done, I will always praise you in the presence of your faithful people, and I will hope in your name, for your name is good." Let us pray. Father God, thank you, Lord, for every servant in this room. Your Word tells us that no greater love than a person can have than a man can have than to lay down our lives for other people. Remind us, Lord, when we tend to make life about us, Lord, remind us that this life and these blessings that you've so richly given each and every one of us, even the blessing for many in this room of leadership, Lord, remind us in those quiet times, the servant that we are supposed to be in your sight. Help us to live our lives not for the applause of people, but for, "Lord, well done, thou good and faithful servant," when we draw our last breath. So, Lord, be in this meeting. Let our talk glow with your strategy, your plan, and your peace. In Jesus' name, amen.
(inaudible)
All right. Good morning, everyone. My name is Isabella Williams. I'm a senior from Russell County High School. I am the distinguishing woman of Russell County, and I will be going and competing at the state level in January. After high school, I plan on attending either Howard or Yale University, depending on where life leads me. But now I'll be leading you all in pledge. Please stand if you're not already and face the flag. Right. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Reverend Herbert, thank you again for coming today, and thank your congregation for allowing you to come. And Ms. Williams, thank you so much. It's so much nicer to hear us doing the pledge than some of these commissioners up here, I promise you. So we do appreciate you being here. So, thank you. I know you got to get back to school, so. All right.
Can I get Reverend Herbert to tell me what he said about gentry?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we were supposed to get some stuff about gentry.
Yes, sir. Let me go ahead for the record. There he is. I moved to town, had a head full of hair, now look at me. I'm a gentry pastor.
There you go. I know the feeling.
He is a blessing, a blessing and an encouragement in my life.
Absolutely. We all agree. Thank you so much. All right. First up, we'll go into public comments. We do have one, Ms. Lindsay Reyes from Hope Harbor Rees. I think I said it wrong anyway. I asked you, and I said it wrong. Lindsay Reese from Hope Harbor. Could you please step to the mic, ma'am?
I'm also very short.
You can just pull it down.
I was going to yell. Can I just pull it down a little bit?
We do have people watching on Facebook.
Oh, you have people watching TV. Very well.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm Lindsay Reese. I'm the director of Hope Harbor, which is the local battered women's program. And I'm here today just to say thank you. We received a donation from the Russell County Commission, and it was a huge thing. We are new to Russell County. We've been serving Russell County for about five years, providing domestic violence shelter and outreach services. And so we are still kind of getting established because COVID hit us, and so it was not something that we could do. So I just am here to sincerely say thank you. Thank you for seeing what we do. Thank you for letting us be a part of this community, and that we're here to help. So if you ever come across anything, Shandra knows how to get in touch with me. And so we would love to be able to provide whatever services that y'all need. So just thank you. I appreciate you. And that's it.
Thank you so much for what y'all do. You know, I grew up with a mom who volunteered in a shelter like that, so I think it's an important mission. We really appreciate what y'all do for our community, too.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all for donating. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. If there's no one else with public comments, nobody missed that? All right, we'll move forward into our agenda. A reminder, please, if you will, silence your phones, so that as people are talking, we're not interrupting them. And I want to say thanks to everyone that's here, from our department heads to the IT department, for getting us on Facebook Live, and those that are also covering it, Citizen and Bean. Appreciate everyone. Welcome to all the elected officials and the media and guests, too. We'll start off by establishing a quorum by calling the roll. Ms. Wright?
Yes, sir. District 3 Costello.
Here.
District 4 Reed.
Here.
District 1 Lee.
Present.
District 2 Chambers.
Here.
District 5 Darty.
Here.
District 7 Screws.
Here.
District 6 Corbett.
Here.
We have a quorum.
And our attorney, Ms. Hope Hicks, is here for the record. Thank you. All right, next up is the approval of the minutes for the October 8th, 2025 Commission Meeting Minutes. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second to motion.
Motion by Commissioner Chambers, second to my Commissioner Darty. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? All right, I did fail to mention that we do have an agenda that we're working off of. It was approved at the work session on October 20th at our work session. So, under proclamations, we have nothing, and we also took care of all the discussion items on Monday night. So we'll move directly into business. And the first one is project money request, Veterans Treatment Court, Commissioner Screws.
Yes, Commissioner, I would like to give the Veteran Treatment Court $750 out of my project money.
All right.
That's in the form of a motion.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Screws.
Second.
Before that motion is seconded, I would like to also give $750 to that as well.
I also would like to, in addition to that, give $750 to my project money.
And I will do the same. So we have four commissioners at this point. Are there any others? We have a motion. And who made the second? Was that Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
We have a second Commissioner Reed. Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? That is approved. And if my math is right, that should be $3,000. Thank you. All right. Next up is a budget transfer request for building inspections. Ms. Wright?
Commissioners, I would like to recommend a budget transfer for the Building Inspection Department. We noticed during the posting of payroll that the retirement budget line was not included in the overall budget. So I'd like to request that $10,885.88 be transferred from line 113 Other Salaries and Wages to line 121 Retirement.
Motion by Commissioner Darty. Is there a second? Second to my Commissioner Chambers. Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? That is approved. Thank you, Ms. Wright. Next up is the Alabama State 2025 Holiday Schedule Amendment from Governor Ivey. Her changes, Ms. Wright?
All right. Commissioners, the governor has approved the 2025 holiday schedule. She added the day after Thanksgiving as a holiday and New Year's Day. So I would like to make two recommendations. My first recommendation is for the commission to approve the day after Thanksgiving and New Year's Day as a county holiday closure.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Screws.
Second to motion.
Second to my Commissioner Darty. Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? All right, I know our employees will appreciate that.
All right. My second recommendation is for the commission to cancel the work session on December 22nd and the commission meeting on December 24th.
A motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Darty.
Second.
Second to my Commissioner Reed. Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? All right, thank you, Ms. Wright. Next up is the 2026 year commission meeting schedule. Ms. Wright?
All right, Commissioners, in your packet, there's proposed 2026 commission meeting schedule. There are several holidays that will fall on either a work session or a commission meeting. I would like to recommend the adoption of the meeting schedule and the approval of counseling those meetings that conflict with any holidays.
A motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Darty.
Second.
Second to my Commissioner Chambers. Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? All right, that is also approved. Lastly for you right now is the purchase card policy edit. Ms. Wright?
Commissioners, there are two edits that need to be made to the purchase card policy. The policy currently states that cardholders would be held responsible for reimbursing sales tax if the purchase includes sales tax. I would like to recommend that this section be deleted and replaced with a form that the cardholder would take with them when they make a purchase. It would need to be signed by the vendor or his supervisor if they are required to pay sales tax.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Darty, second to my Commissioner Reed. Any other discussion or comments?
I would like just to say that there is ongoing training, and training will be provided so that everyone knows exactly what they need to do and what forms they need to try and use, so.
Absolutely. And to piggyback that, this is a new process, and we know we're going to find little things like this to fix, and as long as we're fixing them for the better of the county, that's what we need to be doing. So thank you for doing that.
Yes, sir.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? All right, that is approved as well. Thank you. Commissioners, next up, we have the Russell County DHR Christmas Assistance. I brought this to you, I think we actually had a presentation at the previous work session, and I brought it up again Monday night, a possibility of doing some of our project funds. I've asked Ms. Cindy Jeans to be here again to just kind of overview it real quick for us. Kind of, there were some questions on Monday night about, you know, maybe the cost per kid at Christmas. So Ms. Cindy, if you'll walk to the mic there for me, and just kind of give us a quick overview of what this project is.
This project is strictly designed to provide gifts for children, or foster kids. We have roughly, our largest lack of sponsorship are our teens. And these are kids 14 to 18. And children can remain in foster care up until they're 21 years old if they are attending a university in the state. Right at this point, we have 14 teenagers. There are breakdowns for our age groups are newborn to four years old. We ask that you at least spend $150 per child. Five to 13-year-olds is $175. And then our 14-year-olds and ups, $250. As we all know, all of these kids, they want what others have. They're, most of them are in foster care homes with other children. And I've had remarks like, well, they're foster kids. They should be grateful for anything. Well, they are. When you have a child that's 15 years old that comes into your office and gives her wish list back because she said she asked for too much, and she wants to reduce that down so that it can be given to another child, that gets you up. These kids, they're put in life situations that we can't control. They can't control. And as you all know, this project is very dear to me. And I'm hoping that the county will find in their hearts to either provide additional funds for these children, or either take a child and go buy for a child. We are, with the current economic situations, I mean, you all know, 14-year-old's pair of tennis shoes can cost up to $150, $200. And we're only allowed to buy from Walmart. And you all know how children can be made fun of. And if you can find it in your hearts to provide these funds, or take a child and bless them with a Christmas, I would sincerely appreciate it. You guys have been more than helpful over the last 10 years I've been in this program. If you have any questions or anything, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Cindy. Yes, sir.
You said it was $150, $175, and $200?
$250.
$250.
We went up $50 for the older kids, because when you have teenagers that are in men's and women's clothing, they're not inexpensive. Most of these children are asking for clothing, shoes, and food, snack foods.
Well, Cindy, thanks, and I appreciate you coming back up and kind of rehash that. Commissioner Lee?
Just, I mean, I'm sure it never happens, but just say you raise more money than you have children. And just, do you carry it over to the next year?
It got, we have a Christmas donations fund that is strictly set up for these children. It goes to no other purpose. It goes to nothing else but for these children at Christmas. There is no other delineation whatsoever. It goes into that fund, and then we provide for children for Christmas.
Yeah. I don't know. I think we did 2,500 total last year. I don't know. I don't have those numbers. Sorry. I don't have the numbers of how we did it last year in front of me. Do you have those, Ms. Wright? Okay. I think we did 2,500 total last year.
Last year was only $1,000 from Commissioner Costello.
Okay. So Commissioners, you've heard, you have options here. For one, it is the beginning of the year. We have our project funds. You also can personally go out and adopt kids. I take, I usually do an older kid and a younger kid, myself and my family. But I encourage you to consider doing that as well. But at the moment, I'm going to make a motion to get this started, that I would like to encourage each commissioner to do at least 500 out of the project funds to this project, and that would give a very good push towards getting these foster kids taken care of. They're in the holiday season. So I'll start off with a motion at $500 from District 6. Is there anyone else?
$575 from 1.
Yes, I'd like to do $575 from District 2.
Okay. $575. I'll change mine to that, too.
I'll give all three.
I'll do the same. So that's right. So we have District, we have District 1, District 2, and District 6. All right, are there any other districts that want to do something?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go ahead and do $575 as well.
All right, thank you.
And District 3.
All right.
District 7.
$575.
Okay.
All seven.
All right, all seven commissioners at $575. Thank you. If you will log that, Ms. Wright, I have a motion.
Second.
Is there a second to my Commissioner Costello? Any other discussion or comments? Again, thank you so much, Cindy, for coming. And the emotion is obviously, it's warranted for sure. So all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? All right, it's done. Thank you. Thank you. Next up, we have Reefs Across America. Commissioners, I've brought this to you before, and I've asked Mr. Johnson to be here today. He, Rick actually has been leading kind of the charge on getting fundraisers and reefs together. Reefs Across America actually places reefs at the grave sites of all of our soldiers and those that are buried in the National Cemetery in Fort Mitchell. Rick, will you come to the mic for me, please? And instead of me trying to answer these questions for you, I figured if you had any, he could answer them directly. I will say, as he's coming, price-wise, I had told you $15 on Monday night. If you buy it through Rick's program, it's only 12. So I'd like for him to kind of, kind of
That was going to be my question.
tee that up for us.
Okay. Well, thanks for having me here. Some of you know me, Rick Johnson. I'm an Army dependent. My dad's buried at Fort Mitchell. My mom will be buried at Fort Mitchell. There are over 12,000 people there, growing every year, 500 and, you know, roughly. The person that operated this job last year decided she was just burnt out, because it's a lot of work. I mean, asking for, you know, people to do things. And so I got, I got the honor of doing that this year. I'm proud of that. I'm going to work hard to get that to happen. My report that I give you right now is we're way behind the schedule because of that person that pulled out at the last minute. If I had to guess, we're probably going to be reaching 25% of our goal. That's not acceptable. Everybody that's buried at Fort Mitchell and their families that are taxpayers are, they deserve, everybody has to have a Christmas gift. I have to make that happen. So anything that the county is able to work in hand-in-hand, Mr. Darty, you're our commissioner in that area. I'd love to have to sit down with you and really iron out some things for the future. I'm going to stay working on this as long as the good Lord willing. It's a lot of work. And right now, I'm at about 5,000, some change that I've donated. But we're not reaching the numbers we need yet. So look in your heart, see how you can do it. This is, this is one of the biggest industries we have in Russell County is our military, you know, retirees and their families. I did some math. I think, on average, a county has about 7% of retirees. We have 13% of our retirees. And that's a lot. So these people are coming from all over the world, and they're landing in our, retiring from Benning or wherever. They're landing in Russell County, building these big houses, paying for property tax and car tax and buying milk and all those things. You know, I just think that it's a worthy cause, and I hope you guys could look at it that way and see if we can't, you know, step, take this thing in the right direction. I'm going to work hard. I'll do the heavy lifting. But I've got to find every nook and cranny that I can squeeze us out so we can, you know, we can succeed. 100% is my goal every year. It's not 25% or 50%. And so with y'all's help, and I could ask everybody there, just raise a hand, how many feel that the military deserve, you know, deserve recognition like that? I'll start by putting my hand up. How do y'all?
I think everybody does, yeah.
I mean, you know, it's a no-brainer. So with that being said, I hope y'all help us out and start running with us on this. Y'all, last year, you gave us $1,000. I appreciate that. The year before, I donated $1,000 of my money on behalf of the commission to kind of seed that, and it's already starting to bloom, and I appreciate that. So, any questions?
Yeah, Rick, what day is it, the day that this occurs? Don't you need volunteers for putting out the reefs as well?
Yes, we always need that. And here's the beautiful thing about it. And I've got some video showing where I've interviewed a lot of people that came up from Dothan where their husbands buried and up here, and they just, they all pitch in. We do good with our volunteers coming up the day of. That's a blessing. When you get out there and you see all these people walking around, and they're hugging, and they're crying, and they're really proud of what's going on, that makes your heart, that fills your heart. When you only get 25%, though, it makes some of those families feel like they've just been left away. So with that being said, we work, we have to have all our monies turned in late October, late November. We have to have everything sitting in place. And then, and then I forget the date. It might be the 17th or something like that, when we actually have our Reef Day. I'll find that. I'll find out for sure. But it's, it's a beautiful sight, folks, when you get out there and you see these people doing what they do.
Would you follow up back with us as far as the date?
I will get, I'll call Mr. Corbett and make sure y'all know all the information.
We've, we've done pretty good with the volunteer fire departments. Every year, he's called, and I've kind of rallied the troops to get them there to start helping put the reefs out. And they also guard them so that people don't get there early. People actually get, the volunteers get time to actually help do it. So that's a big part of it. So, yep. We will do it. So Commissioners, I would like to entertain the idea of doing project funds towards this. This is an important thing. I think we all probably, if we're not, we know somebody, if we don't have loved ones already buried there, we probably have someone that we know that's buried there. I would like to see us consider doing this. Is there anyone that wants to start that?
I'll start off in the form of a motion. I'd like to donate $250 of my project funds.
All right.
In addition to that, I'd like to donate $500 of my project funds.
All right.
I'd like to donate $275.
Oh, y'all gonna make me do math now. All right.
I'd like $268.
No, $250. Here goes your hair.
$250.
And a quarter.
Where'd you get it from?
I'm not feeling like an auctioneer up here now, so this is bad. I'm going to do 500 from District 6 as well.
I'm going to do 500.
All right, so I'm going to leave that to Ms. Wright to figure out what everybody says. So we have that in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right.
You can't make the motion and the second.
I don't even know who started it now, so that's good. We have a motion, a second?
Second to motion.
All right. So a motion by Commissioner Chambers, second to my Commissioner Darty. Any other discussion or comments? Thank you, Rick, for being here. Thank you for what you're doing, and let's figure out ways to keep this going.
I really appreciate it, folks.
Thank you, sir. All in favor?
I'm going to sit back here and listen to you all.
Sure, sure. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? All right, that is approved. Thank you. Next up, we have nothing under county engineer. We have several under sanitation. The first one is proposed rules and regulations for the collections department. Second reading. Randy?
Yes, good morning, Commissioner and Chair. We went over this pretty well, just to go back and
I don't, you don't have to go over the whole thing. Yeah, I thought you had a comment. You were looking, you cut your mic on, so I thought you wanted to
I didn't know if you wanted me to highlight the changes or just move on from there.
I think we're good. This is a second reading. The only thing we have changed is we are not going now to do the opting out of the dollar if you don't sign up for the electronic piece of it, Ms. Hicks.
I was just going to read the paragraph that I changed or reflect that. It now says, "Customers may elect electronic statements or paper statements to be sent by U.S. Mail. Customers who elect to receive electronic statements will not receive paper statements."
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second to motion.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Screws, second to my Commissioner Darty. That's the second reading, so this will take effect. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? All right, that is approved. Thank you. Next up, we have the purchase of a refuge trailer. Randy?
Yes, sir. We are. We're trying to get approval for a new refuge trailer for the transfer station to go back and forth to the landfill. We bought one last year. We're ordering the same exact trailer. The price has not changed. It will be purchased through Ingram Equipment, which is a source well provider. It is a budgeted item on line item 561 Construction Equipment. It was approved by the board, the amount of $119,747.
Motion to approve. Second to motion.
Motion by Commissioner Lee, second to my Commissioner Darty. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? All right, that's approved. Next up is the comp and collision on the garbage trucks. Randy?
Yes, within the last five to six years, you know, we purchased several new garbage trucks, probably around eight. We have paid off five. We still have three remaining that's financed. We would like to remove the comp and collision off the five that have been paid off and depreciated down, and just go with counted risk liability on those.
A motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Darty, second to my Commissioner Chambers. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Well, you know what will happen when we do this. I'm in favor of that. But they'll be three of you wrecked tomorrow.
Yeah, I hope not. And just as a note, the reason we're approving this, I think we decided, you know, on Monday night, because we approved to put them on the insurance, we're going to approve and take them off as well. So, all right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? All right, that is approved. And lastly, you're going to mention and kind of go ahead and give the first notice on the November holiday garbage pickup schedule.
Correct. November, we're going to have two holidays. First being on Tuesday, November the 11th, which is Veterans Day, which we will take that day off. We will come back in on Wednesday. We will pick up Tuesday and Wednesday's garbage, hopefully on Wednesday. Anything that remains will be picked up on Thursday and complete the week out. The next excuse
Keep on continuing.
The next one will be Thanksgiving, which will be on a Thursday, the 27th, which we will be off that day, of course. And then we will come back in on Friday, the 28th, and complete the week. Our Thursday route will be completed on Friday.
And Friday, they will get holiday pay?
They will get double pay. They will get paid for the working and the holiday pay.
Right. All right. I don't think we actually have to take action on that. But thank you for letting us know the first time, and we're going to make sure our customers are aware of it and get it on the website as well, so.
Chair, I have a question on that. We're going to put it on our signs.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
We're going to be able to put it on my sign, Leon?
We're not going to have it done that quick. It might have it done by then. I saw the steel waiting, sitting there waiting on it yesterday, so it might get ready.
Chair, going back to the comp and collision on the insurance, on Monday night, you told us, what was the figure that we were paying per year?
We're paying around $41,000 a year, and that should substantially bring it down to about savings of around $30,000 per year.
And that, I just wanted to make that point, that to let our citizens know that we are actively looking at ways that where we can save money and save their taxpayer money so that it can be spent in a better direction somewhere else. So thank you, Randy.
Always better than raising garbage prices, for sure. So, all right. So we have nothing under administrator. Madam Attorney, I know you have one.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I would recommend that the commission enter into executive session. The purpose of this executive session will be to discuss the consideration that the commission is willing to offer or accept when considering the purchase, sale, exchange, lease, or market value of real property. I do anticipate that there will be action taken by the commission after the executive session. So we would simply move into executive session and come back into the meeting and adjourn from the meeting.
All right. You have the recommendation of the attorney. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Reed. Is there a second?
Second to motion.
Second to my Commissioner Darty. Any other discussion? Only discussion I'll make is we will finish the commissioners' discussion and announcements before we adjourn into executive session, so.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. Also, we needed to say an estimated time. I would anticipate this being between 15 and 30 minutes. Then we will be back from executive session.
All right, thank you. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? All right, that executive session is approved. We'll finish up with the commissioners' discussion and announcements.
Did anybody ask to probate Judge?
That's what I was
We always do that at the last minute.
She's in here. We know she's not in there.
That's true. All right. All right, any Commissioners' discussion items? Got a couple. You've got some things in front of you, Commissioners, from our tourism, that this is a way that we are working to promote our county. We have done several things. One, we talked about, Commissioner Costello talked about this a little bit on Monday night, but we had Oktoberfest out at the Uchi Campgrounds, which is Fort Benning, but on the Alabama side. We were one of the premier sponsors of that, promoting Russell County. We had a banner there showing how Russell County supports our troops and values Fort Benning and the partnership we have. But these items here can actually be given at events and things to promote the county as well. So, do think that was a very positive approach to promoting Russell County. Also, on Sunday, we had a special needs trunk retreat in Crawford. It was very well received. So many great comments thanking the county for allowing this to happen at the county facility and the community for supporting it. So, I see them doing that in the future. There will be a regular, community-wide trunk or treat this Sunday, which will start at 5:00 PM at the Crawford Walking Trail, which we'll talk more about. I just didn't want people to get confused thinking it had already happened. That's all I have. Are there any other discussions from the Commissioners? This didn't make the agenda. All right, under announcements, we have several. The first, starting in Hertzburg, we have a Halloween party, 6:00 PM Central Time on Friday, October 24th. Also followed by Cleanup Day from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM on the 25th, which is a Saturday, all that Central Time, 11 to 3. Then, we have the, like, as I mentioned, the trunk or treating in Crawford, and that'll be Eastern Time, 5:00 PM on Sunday, October 26th, the Crawford Walking Trail. We have the Veterans Day Parade, which is November 8th, which is a Saturday, that starts. The parade actually starts at 10:00 AM on the Phoenix City side and goes over to Columbus. We have a movie on the square, which is a Polar Express in Crawford on Saturday, November 8th. Gates will open around 6:00 PM. The movie's going to start as soon as it starts getting dark. Music will actually start a little earlier than that, around 5:00 or so, welcoming people. Veterans Day holiday closure, again, was mentioned Tuesday, November 11th, is Veterans Day. All county buildings will be closed and operations. Crawford Market Days, again, the last one for the year. This will be a holiday market. It will be Saturday, November 15th, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM Eastern Time, again, the last one of the year. And we'll have Little Feathers and the Fall Festival at Fort Mitchell. This is one of our tourism events. We really want you to come to that. Saturday, November 8th, 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, at the Visitor Center in Fort, there in Fort Mitchell. Just to get ahead of it, we have our Christmas lighting events that we want to keep pushing out there and putting it out on social media as well. Crawford Park is Tuesday, December 2nd. Ladonia Sports Complex is Thursday, December 4th. The Seal Courthouse Christmas is Saturday, December 6th. That's a change. Last year, it was Friday. This year, it's Saturday, December 6th. Fort Mitchell Tree Lighting, also a change this year. It will be on a Sunday, December 7th at Fort Mitchell. And then, the Hertzburg Tree Lighting will be on Friday, December 12th at 6:00 PM Central Time in Hertzburg. Okay? Also, the Hertzburg Christmas Parade will start at 10:00 AM on Saturday, December 13th. That's a busy weekend as well in Hertzburg. All right, keep in mind, any Hertzburg times are Central Time. All right, we are in executive session, and we'll be back in 15 to 30 minutes. Session. So, we do have, I believe we have a motion on what was discussed in executive session?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Costello.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the Commission and the county go into a contract and purchase the real estate of 1705 Fourth Place South in the amount of $45,000 plus closing.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Costello, seconded by Commissioner Reed. Is there any other discussion or comments? So, we will need to move some funds around. We'll make the motion right after that. We'll hear from the Administrator on the funding portion.
I would like to say in that motion that we use East Alabama title, Mr. Kenzer, for the closing.
Okay. All right, you have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or comments? Will you please poll the Commissioners?
District Three, Costello.
Yes.
District Four, Reed.
Yes.
District One, Lee.
Yes.
District Two, Chambers.
Yes.
District Five, Darty.
Yes.
District Seven, Screws.
Yes.
District Six, Corbett.
Yes. All right, Commissioners, I've asked Ms. Wright if she will kind of propose any, the funds, how we're going to pay for this, so that we'll have that in front of you and any motions that we need to make on that as well. So.
So, Commissioners, we will transfer $25,000 from the Maintenance Department, line 524 of renovations and additions, into budget line item 510 for land. And the remainder of those funds will come out of the County Project Fund that was just recently created.
Motion to approve. Second motion.
Motion by Commissioner Reed, seconded by Commissioner Darty. Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? That does pass unanimously. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Tell them no.
Motion by Commissioner Lee. Is there a second?
Second motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Darty. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? We are adjourned.